All the meeting to order, roll call please.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Captain Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Davies.
Here.
Councilwoman Hecky.
Here.
Councilwoman Popekord.
Here.
Everyone is present, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would invite you all to stand as Pastor Chris Frost from Mountain Bible Church leads us in the invocation.
Dear Savior, your word tells us that you formed our hearts and you understand all of our ways. Help us rest in the fact that you fashioned our hearts and you know the stress and the worry that lives there, the competing desires that tend to strangle our joy. For those here tonight who may feel unappreciated or neglected or overlooked, show them that you take special note of them and that you are continuing to fashion their hearts, their minds, their wills and desires according to your magnificent plan for their life. Give each member here tonight inspiration and imagination to see your loving hand involved in the cares of Tehachapi, California. Father, we pray that your will in heaven would be done on earth here in Tehachapi. We just pray your richest blessings on each member here and may your will be done. We ask this in the name of your son who gave his life for us. In all of God's people's head.
Amen. Mr. Smith, will you lead us in the flag salute?
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under thy, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, we will review the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or the audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is advised and desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence with the opportunity for any member of the public to address it. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone in the audience would like to have removed? Counsel? Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve consent. I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it was a five-zero vote. Audience oral and written communications. The city council welcomes public comments on any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. We respectfully request that this public forum be utilized in a positive and constructive manner. Persons addressing the council should first state their name and area of residence, the matter of city business to be discussed, and the organization or persons represented in it. Comments directed to an item on the agenda should be made at the time of that item's call for discussion. Does anyone have any public comments?
Hello, mayor, members of council.
Hi, I'm Father Wes Clare. I'm the director of St. Jude's about since Angleton Church here in town. This is a follow-up to a moment of comment we made last week in preparation for a request from the city to help encourage us in our grant endeavors for a project we have. I'll update you all on my progress. Our church, just the background, has been in this town for over forty-two years. And in that time, we've helped the chronically needy and occasionally needy in this town often for the tune of over ten thousand dollars a year in their needs and our availability providing. We've seen, and we've noted this with our friends with the Salvation Army, there's over a hundred and seventy families in this town who are chronicly needy. And they, on food aid alone, have needed up to two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars for their food per month. What we are bringing to the table is, with our church and the option and the grants we're applying for can help us, is means to provide employment or better benefits for these chronicly needy to help toward their independence. This will, because it's an endeavor toward independence, it won't add to the homelessness concerns in this town because it won't give law other than to those who are already here. But we are a conduit because people often come to us for help before they go to places such as College Community Services. We can bring referrals, but this equips us to give these people life skills, the opportunities, the fact that there's a building that we used to own that's now under sale. We're hoping to raise the grant money to acquire that building back. And so with sufficient grants, we can use so and have a space we need to teach these chronicly needy or at least get them the benefits that they need through our either ID, driver's licenses, and basic life skills to become employees and not as needy as they would otherwise be. We've also done an informal survey throughout the town and there are growing number of businesses looking for employers, or employees rather, and this will provide them the skills they need to be competitive in the workplace. So we want to offer our gratitude to the city for encouraging us in these grants. We're really grateful also to the city planners in helping us in our endeavors to try and get this whole building, Courage Street, back and to make it a viable ministry center for this and other endeavors that we do as a church. We're so grateful to you all. And if I offer any questions, if you might entertain otherwise, thank you for your time.
Do you need like a letter from the city to help with your grant or?
Yeah, frankly, anything the city can offer to us, we can present to potential grant holders would be tremendous benefit to us because granting agencies, whether it's a business corporation or a nonprofit umbrella, we already audited our votes several years. In fact, they're going to look at that. They're also looking at our viability as a church. We're always able to pay our bills. But they're also going to see our visibility in the city and how active we've been in this era of today, which has been rather busy. And so any endorsement from the city in the endeavor to get these grants, we deeply appreciate.
I can get with you later in the week and provide a letter from the mayor if no one checks to them. Alright, thank you.
Thank you again. God bless you all.
Any more?
Sorry, sir. Sorry, Smith. I need to grab a seat. Madam Mayor, if I may, I have some paperwork connected to the clerk that I handed out.
Yes, sir.
And to break it on and hand it they like to do as well. What I've given you here, this is the part of the employee handbook which entitles me to my hearing with you guys. And I appreciate you to take a couple of minutes and read this. And while you're reading this, I'll enlighten you a little bit on how I got here. And on the second page, you'll see that this is the disposition forms I received from K. Rover. And you can see Greg Garrett's signature on there acknowledging that this occurred and that he can know in this termination. And also, you'll notice in the last paragraph that within ten days, you notified my supervisor, which is Mr. Rover, and I did that day that I wanted my hearing. So this is also acknowledged by Greg Garrett. And Mr. Rover does have those paperwork. And he also recorded the end of the session himself, along with Chrissy Cobus being there and also Chris her. So while you're looking at that, I'll give you a little breakdown on how I got here. Two thousand and twelve, I'm in contact with Phil Smith. And I told Phil what was going on. We had a police sergeant who was blatantly stealing time. And he was not working. He was not where he was supposed to be, living and acting. He was home two, three, four hours at a time early. And there were certain days, and you know this, Greg, that he wouldn't even show up because multiple people made this complaint to you. As a matter of fact, when Sergeant Bailey brought this complaint to you, you actually chastised him and you actually condemned him. He brought the paperwork to you showing that. Not only did he break you the evidence of that, but during the homicide, the man was supposed to be the OIC, the officer in charge, the lead officer. You know how long it took him to get there? Twenty-three minutes rolling code. Can you think of anywhere in the city of Tehachapi it takes rolling twenty-three minutes code, code license hours? You can't, can you? You wanna why? Because he was almost home. Go down Avenue West and start driving towards Tehachapi. I don't give you a good idea of where he was. This was four hours before his shift ended, the homicide occurring. The whole scene was messed up because they didn't have proper leadership there. Phil, I brought this to your attention. You sent me a text saying, Pete, I appreciate this. I got your back a hundred and ten percent. I still have it. I gotta print it up for you. You don't have my bat now. And I can't figure that out. I entitled certain things, but you towered away. Now, you can't use an attorney as an example because he's not in charge of you. He's not in charge of the city. He's simply a representative contracted by the city. But for some reason, you guys let him run your show. You're in charge. You're your bosses. And yet, none of you want to step up and do what you're obligated to do by the paperwork I provided right in front of you. Can you answer why? You know, you asked me to come to your home. I know you're gonna chime in your second, then you're gonna tell me one more second. Well, Phil, I went to your house that night. And when you told me...
I'd like to answer why. You asked him a question. We asked why. We've had a lawyer here twice go through everything you're alleging here and showing that it's not true.
Tell me, did you read it?
This case you're talking about, I don't know anything about that. The legal stuff here, yes. Yes, we've been all through that. And they've been all through...
The lack of your knowledge is not my issue. No, there was... Well, here's the issue is, is you need to read what I entitled. I don't care what a contracted attorney says. I care what my documents say that I'm obligated to that were contracted by. Do you agree with that? No. Do you have a contract at your office?
Listen, Pete, you said the same thing. You opened the rent over your house down here. And you told us to park in the alley and hide in the back. And we parked in the alley. And we hid in the back. And we went inside your house. And we told you what was occurring. You did nothing with it because we actually saw you go down. We saw you go to talk to Greg. But you did nothing with it. You know what you did is you took what I gave you and used it as ammo against me. You did it because they wouldn't have that intel unless you gave it to them. So I came to Ed and then Ed backed me. Now, I think Ed's going over his greatest and how you guys are treating the city and treating its employees. Matter of fact, you were just talking about how nice he was the other day, Greg. What are you gonna do? Have her shut me off? Have you heard enough? I think you need to read what I'm entitled to.
I know exactly what went down. Exactly.
Did you?
You're not an employee, period.
Oh, I didn't say that last. I'm asking why I'm not.
You were terminated, that's why.
No, ma'am, I know everything usually comes from you. I don't have this back and forth.
We can...
All I'm asking is, why are we not obligating? Why are we not honoring this paperwork? Jay Johnson is just another contractor with an opinion, an opinion that doesn't even, really not even relevant to this. Because the paperwork is a contract between the employee and the city.
They're gonna follow his opinion.
Bring in just any attorney and kill any contract.
They're gonna follow his opinion.
They're gonna follow his opinion.
Yes, they are.
You know, Mr. Graff, again, you're out of time. I'm sorry. We can't comment.
You have physical evidence sitting in front of you. And you can't even acknowledge it.
Nope. Thank you for your comments.
I just can't believe that. It's pretty cowardice, I gotta tell you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Schroeder, could I ask you a question, please? I realize there are certain things that we cannot talk about regarding employee matters. I have heard this, like all the rest of us have, over and over and over again. I have not been privy to any of the discussion that was had. All I know is that Mr. Graff, the night that I was sworn in and seated, said the same exact thing. Could we put this on a closed session agenda so I can understand? Because I hear an employee or past employee repeatedly come over and over and over and over and say the same thing. And I have to have the background to understand why we're doing or not doing the things that we are or are not doing. I just need to understand that. So could you or could somebody, could this be put on a closed session agenda item? And we can discuss this because it is an employee-related matter. So I'm aware of it and can understand the situation. There are some issues there. I will have to check with our HR attorney, Jay Johnson, because you can't prejudge something. But I think it's eminently fair for you to want to know how this all came about. I will point out that Jay Johnson has been here twice and went through the whole thing after Pete has spoken. So I can certainly recommend to the city manager that we check with the HR attorney and see what the legal consequences would be in taking a matter that is presumably under litigation, although we've got no litigation going, and discuss it in closed session. I don't know seeing if we can do that and report it back. Great, thank you. I think that would provide some level of better understanding. Because we're gonna, this has been going on now for two years.
It's gonna keep going.
It's gonna keep going. And I need to understand what, I have to understand that. And I appreciate it. If you can talk to the outside legal counsel and find out if there's any prohibition of doing that, I would greatly appreciate that.
Okay. Any other comments from the public?
My name is Mr. Carter Smith, and I live in the city. This year, 2019, the city has experienced a very wet month of May. Because of this, we have also experienced a big problem with weeds. Our police chief offered a partial solution that has worked well in other municipalities. He proposed a tax on rental properties if weeds and the rain were not cleaned up. The solution was not well received. Many owners of rental properties objected and the city withdrew the proposal. The city also promised to try to find another more flattable solution. I am here to ask the city that it continues efforts to solve the problem. However, I would like to suggest that any measure attempted must apply to all landowners within the city. I would like the city to examine how Kern County is approaching the problem. The county has set a deadline of June 1st for property owners to clean up their properties. People who do not clean them up are given a grace period of one week to comply. Those that do not comply will be assessed a penalty of five hundred to one thousand dollars. This is being done in an effort to decrease wildfires, which take an enormous toll in property losses and even human life in our state. Municipalities also suffer damages because of wet years. Moisture encourages the growth of many small mammals and rodents. These small creatures are nuisance and endanger human life when they invade communities because of the many germs they carry. Our mountains harbor animals that can carry the bubonic plague of another diseases. A number of years ago, we actually had a case of bubonic plague within what is now the city limits. The victim survived, but we should not count on survival beside the incitiness of weeds of very real danger to public health exists. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Okay, my name is Michael McCancy. And the thing that annoys more people than anybody else in Tehachapi is coming back from Bakersfield, going down to Bakersfield. And this has a great impact. But there is a solution that I've come up with involving some other people, getting some figures from council rats about how long it takes, or how many trucks come into, go through five and go through fifty-eight. There's this company called BYD. Does anybody know about BYD? They're one of the world's largest manufacturers of vehicles, a Chinese company. And they're set up in Lancaster, North Street. And they have a hundred and twenty thousand employees in their factory in China. And they could have chosen anywhere in the United States to get their business started. But they chose Lancaster because the too smoggy areas in California, in the United States of LA and Bakersfield, Alabama. And they have the same problem in China with Peking with massive amount of smog. And they realized that it costs a lot of money to keep those people alive and breathing properly. So the next thing is I'm waiting for the speeds of the electric trucks that they make and whether they have a faster acceleration than the diesel trucks. And you know, everybody here's probably got stuck behind two diesel trucks coming up from Bakersfield. So the idea would be to use the tractor part of it with the electric engine and have a shuttle service. So you unhook the trailer part of it, and then it goes down to Bakersfield and then it comes back. And if it does in fact accelerate faster than the other trucks, then we can come up with some solutions. Because they do this now, it's called cross stocking. And it's where trucks, you know, exchange their load in the middle of the line. So also, we can charge the batteries. The batteries, the most incredible batteries in the world, really. We can charge them from the wind farms. And so need to set up a little group of people from the city, go through this. And it's a very exciting project. And the other one is to make Tehachapi and Tohome the best of, you know, the first renewable, hundred percent renewable towns in the United States. And we're lucky to be so close to this company. I have some contacts that I've gone working with. And they are sure that they're just like a lot of other electric vehicles. And they do have faster acceleration. And so that's it.
Could you, after the meeting, get your contact manager, I'm sorry, contact information to our city manager, Mr. Garrett, that we can go from there, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
My name is Big Lay Sam Canyon. And I'll be representing my group during this emergency accountability for government. Recently, two business owners, one woman and a witness took a meeting with Jay Slosser to talk about some infractions on their business and how they were gonna remedy these infractions. It's my understanding that they were treated in such a derogatory fashion, demeaning, humiliated, talked down to. And one of the ladies started crying. And she still is right now. It's not very well that it's mean. So City Tehachapi has this respect, you know, come to the meeting, respect. Be nice, hold it on your city hall. I think it applies to the city employees too. And as you guys investigated allegations into one of your council members, I think this needs to be investigated. And I think that needs to be deposed and proper action taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Alright, we'll move on to item number five. Disbursements and bills for RSI Petroleum from May 14th through May 28th.
Madam Mayor, I need to recuse myself because I'm in a play of RSI.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve disbursements and bills for RSI.
Motion?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye and opposed? Let the record show it was four-zero. Okay, Assistant City Manager, number nine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What I bring to you today is consideration of action to address landscape lighting and landscape maintenance district deficits, something to be alluded to in the budget presentation earlier this afternoon. Background, Tehachapi regularly enters an agreement with developers of projects to essentially improve the cost of landscaping and public roadway as well as street lighting. These agreements create landscape lighting and landscape maintenance districts to ensure that public space is maintained. The cost of streetlights and housing developments are covered with annual assessment and property tax of that specific area. These assessments are disclosed during the purchase of a home or a business in one of these areas. As part of the quality of life enjoyed from members of our community, landscape maintenance and street lighting is a vital part of the approved general plan for the city of Tehachapi and certain levels of service and expectations that are established. In recent years, cost increase for contract landscape maintenance as well as the impact of areas such as Warrior Park has sent some LLDs and LMDs into a deficit. This deficit has been backfilled by the General Fund. Recently, council had expressed an interest in ensuring enterprise funds which LLD and LMDs qualify as operating balanced. And as a result, staff identified the following LLDs as operating deficits that are being covered by the General Fund. As you can see, those were some of the larger, there are a few more that operate in deficit, but the deficit was something that could probably be recovered with maybe adjustment here and there without affecting level of service too much. But these were quite substantial. And so these need to be addressed at a different level. So what we're talking about here is the authorization of action. So in any increase in property assessments, the subject of provision of Prop. 218 requires all taxes and most charges on properties be subject to voter approval. Council may authorize a study for the reassessment of the affected LLDs to determine the rate necessary to ensure properties are assessed at the appropriate level. This was done initially, and these studies simply missed the mark. They maybe didn't take into consideration increased labor costs. Maybe this, again, it was something that just, it came up short in the initial company's assessment of these, what to put on the tax roll. So once the study is completed, you go that route, propose new rate, is then subject to protest votes. Each property owner within the reassessed district would receive a protest ballot. And the new rate would be approved if fewer than fifty percent vote no on the new rate. So that's of all ballots, an out protest ballot, fifty-one percent come back as a no, that's the only of the options, protest ballot, then that would not take effect. Right now, currently, the fiscal impact, the estimated cost of rate study between ten and fifteen thousand dollars, if that's kind of ballpark or something like this, that can be recovered in the new rate structure or recovered by the General Fund should the assessment be declined by the voters. An increased rate would also result in savings of about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars that's currently being spent out of the General Fund. So we're seeing a situation where property owners... In terms of recommendations, staff provided these options based on previous council discussions in relation to enterprise funds. Our suggestion this time, council consider authorizing the study to reassess the affected LLDs, being called the state's Orchard Line Autumn Hills, or the option to take no action, continue to address the operating deficit via the General Fund. On screen, questions?
Any questions in the audience concerning this?
Yeah, the ballpark of distribution of that increase over however many homes, what their rate increase will be.
It depends on the size of the bid of the specific district. These that I listed are quite large, they're the larger tracks. And so, yeah, I'm not exactly sure, that would be dependent on the study and then we'd come back with the assessment. These are, these are larger, that's again, being a larger deficit and having more homes, some of these have a smaller deficit, there was a small amount of homes. So maybe that would have been more of an impact, these are much larger tracks. And so it would be, that would be determined in the study.
Just the ballpark, are we talking $10,000, $15,000 a year or $100 a year? You know, if you're the, if you're the property owner, you're going to say, yeah.
I just ran some quick numbers for the Autumn Hills, I'm sorry, Orchard Line, which is on Denison. 200 homes, Jake.
Two-ten.
Two-ten, $135 to close the gap.
So just to, just to, anyway, so just to rewind a little bit, so these, the new neighborhoods that have been designed and built in our city in the last ten years, the developer and the homeowners all agreed to tax themselves on their property tax roll for landscaping and lighting. That means the streetlights, Southern California路灯, that means all the grass, the trees, the flowers, so on and so forth. So we've been managing and maintaining that through city employees and a contract with Alpha Landscaping and Bus, we're doing the best that we can in landscaping services. But these, these three are the big three, been running in the red, meaning we're not collecting enough tax revenue to pay the bills, the electric bills, the landscaping bills, so on and so forth. So the General Fund is subsidizing those neighborhoods. If you don't live in that neighborhood, you're actually subsidizing their landscaping. So the proposal tonight is make that budget whole, right? That's what we want to do all of us. We don't want to run in the red, we don't want to subsidize one budget to another. We need to pay as you go. And so if you live in one of these neighborhoods, it's costing more to maintain that. So we're asking tonight your permission to go out to these neighborhoods, we'll send the letter, let them know this, in very plain English, what's going on, and let them know they have a choice to increase their property tax so we can pay these bills or not. So that's the vote, right? And then the council will come back, we'll come, break it back to the council, we'll unveil with the votes, they'll either say yes or no. If they say yes, then we'll have the ability to add this to the tax bill and everyone's happy, right? If they say no, then the council will have to continue to subsidize those neighborhoods or not. You could always let the grass die, you could always let the trees die, and you could always turn off the lights. I don't think that's what we want to do. We've been recommending to this council for some years now to pay that subsidy, similar to the airport, right? We make it whole every year. It's a bad trend though, right? So as city management, we want to make sure that you have all of the options and all facts in front of you. So tonight we're asking you whether or not we can go to these neighborhoods and ask their opinion.
Okay. Just to be clear, the action tonight would be to authorize the studies, which would result in us returning with the results of the study so that you could see the amount of money specific to each property. And we would show you specifically which properties. And then if you wanted to do it at that point, we would send out the protest ballots. So you would get one more bite of this, you would get a precise number before you went forward if you wished to do this.
Right. And if you went forward and there was an amount, and then instead of just saying, do you want to pay this extra tax or not, and if I'm a homeowner, I'm going to say no, right? Or say, there might be another option, we might have to do more zero scaping, reducing landscaping, or those kind of options in your neighborhood to bring that. That might be something that they need to be part of their decision-making process.
Certainly conversation, except that, you know, when you start designing and ripping out treble trees and putting in zero scaping, that can run into hundreds of thousands of dollars, something you're even further in the red. But it's something to certainly consider and discuss. Absolutely.
You get where I'm going. Versus just say, you want to pay the extra tax or are you willing to absorb this to keep your neighborhood landscaping nice, something, something where it's not just...
The devil's in the number. I think for all of us, I think that our landscaping crew's doing an amazing job giving sound beautiful, you know, and so it comes down to how much it is and anyway, so you guys would have options at that point, most of us.
What are the questions?
No, go ahead.
Is there a way to, if a home is sold, that it could be increased? Whereas you've got the base right here that's paying a certain amount, can, is there anything besides the Prop. 218 vote that a future homeowner would be paying more?
From my understanding, because it is Prop. 218, it's subject to Prop. 218, you can't, you can't change that. It's not like development where it develops pays more to obviously their impact. So, yeah, be a prop to be extended, pretty much.
Yeah.
Limited to those in fees, taxes, et cetera.
Those are the neighborhoods that do look nice.
Absolutely.
And the base, it would look nice. So what, we'll have to judge at that point.
It is a rate subject to 218, so, and I would have, we'd have to explore this with a consultant who would prepare the study, but perhaps you could defer or delay the introduction of the cost to have it ramp up instead of happening instantaneously in a single year, Tom's agreeing with me at least in concept. So, you know, if you guys would like us to explore it, but consider way, maybe that what you would tell us to do then is just to explore ways to soften the impact and to bring you as many options as are reasonable or feasible.
I think the study is moving that.
Yeah, the study tells you what the number is and then we could, we could also ask that consultant to consider and present to us ways in which to make it as palatable as possible. We could certainly do that.
I like the phasing people, because we, over the years here, we would go for 10 years without a water rate increase, and then when we raised it $2 after that 10th year, I mean, we got clobbered versus 35 cents a year for 10 years, something like that. Whereas this, if you had a phasing, or if a home sold, you'd already go to the max amount of phasing, something like that.
If there was some options.
Yeah, if you give us some options.
I think that the study would help us with those options and see how we could possibly, that's a good idea, we could possibly, by the way, just spread it out, or again, a home sold, like when a something sold in the reassess, when it's sold, we'd be ready similar to that, so.
Are they under a CPI for the lighting district at this point?
Yes, there is.
So they do have a CPI. Okay.
Did we just not charge enough to start with? How did we get?
We did, though. It was going to cost.
I'm not complaining, I'm just saying that.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
Motion on staff's recommendation to do the study so we can have something to guide us.
You have a second?
Most seconded.
Moved and seconded. As recommended by staff, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it was a 5-0 vote. Development Services Directors report.
Honorable Mayor, council members, the item I have before you tonight is yet another piece in the puzzle of our active transportation program rail board or pedestrian safety project. So again, just a reminder for the sake of the public, who may not know, this is our $2 million plus or minus project to enhance the aggregate rail crossings in town as well as to construct safety fencing and pedestrian related improvements, sidewalk mainly on H Street between Mill and Hayes and then the three crossings at Green, Hayes and Denison in order to improve the safety of the railroad through the entire city. In particular, trying to keep pedestrians and bicycles moving to the crossings as well as those crossing improvements will also make significant improvements for vehicle, vehicles crossing as well, smoothing them out and then providing some safety improvements like specifically media and so cars can't go between the arms, which is a very bad idea that people do it. Anyway, so what I focus, one of the final pieces to getting us to begin construction is a ground lease. As part of the project, between Mill Street and Green Street, we need to lease a small section of land from Union Pacific. There on the south side of H Street, they have just an open dirt field, if you guys are familiar with where I'm talking about. And the back of curve is the city right of way. And so in order to add sidewalk and fencing, we need an additional 10 feet of right of way, which they are willing to lease to us for the sum of $5,000 a year, increased based upon an annual 3%. And so we recently entered into a lease with Union Pacific for the park and ride project, so hopefully you guys are reasonably familiar with the concept. It's a year-to-year lease, it's a total about one-third of an acre. The $5,000 on a per square foot basis is very similar on a per square foot basis to the land we leased for the park and ride. So we feel like we're getting as reasonable a deal as we can hand out to Union Pacific. They're tough negotiators, I'll say that. A condition of the lease is that we would be obligated to maintain a security fence along the length of the property, which is ironically the entire plume of the lease, so we're able to do that. As with other Union Pacific leases and with grant funds, we cannot use grant funds for this ongoing maintenance expense, so the General Fund will be required to cover this $5,000 a year lease in the future. However, in order to keep the project moving forward and in light of the benefit that it provides to safety of our communities, staff recommends approval of the proposed Union Pacific ground lease subject to final approval from the city attorney, as well as allocation of the necessary funds as recommended by the city by answer. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the audience concerning this? Council? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion on staff's recommendation.
You have a second?
Most seconded.
Moved and seconded. On staff's recommendation, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed? Let the record show it was a 5-0 vote. Thank you. City manager, report to council.
I have nothing to say, thank you.
Okay. Council members, reports? Do you have anything, Mr. Davies?
Normally, I'm told to.
Mr. Smith?
In my district over on Dean and Curry, there was, I'm not sure about the name, I've heard his name, Mr. Mike Massey, wrote a editorial with some suggestions and his observation that there is a, perhaps a higher number of collisions at that intersection for whatever reason. People from east and west, they have a stop sign and they, for some reason, think the other folks have a stop sign and they pull out, they don't. So my recommendation would be, I thought he had some good observations and maybe some good recommendations such as signage that says, cross traffic that stops might help. I'd just like the mayor to direct staff just to look into if there's anything else that you would want to do there at that intersection. I'm not sure one's another stop sign right there, just, you know, because you've got to stop at F, and this is at E where the hospital, the corner there, just take a look at it if you could come back to the recommendation. Would you like to, that was my question, would you like to report back or would you like us to just take a look and take appropriate action?
Appropriate action.
Appropriate action.
So I'm going to depend on a traffic study.
Right. Yeah. We could do that in council. Whoever wrote the articles, that's kind of your business.
I'm going to go with Matt Hitt. We're going to watch around, you were going in there, there was a Uber driver. So he, I was going and I just pulled out of the driveway to the store and what was I going, 10:15, my wow, now, he pulled right out and slammed his dick. But it was an out-of-town, you know, Uber driver.
Well, I had a friend, Aaron, that works at State Mart, and this beautiful little yellow Mustang, he got clobbered there last summer and, you know, just, I've seen that video. Just take a look and as appropriate, whatever you think. Thank you.
Mr. Hickey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of questions have been presented to me over the last couple of weeks by some folks. One of them was, we have now got some new signs that are on some of the exiting tributaries to the city that says that you are now leaving the city of Tehachapi city limits. Those are relatively new and the question came up, you know, usually you say, you know, welcome to the city, but it's very rare that you see signs that say you are leaving the city. What was the, what was the rationale for those signs being installed? And it was a question that came to me from a member of the public, similar to the H Street question.
So we want to try and educate, be transparent with people. We receive calls every day from people in the Tehachapi area that believe they live in the city. So we have a welcome to the city of Tehachapi sign, you're coming in and you're now leaving the city of Tehachapi. Very common for cities who have these sorts of signs. So in an effort to educate people whether or not they live in the city.
Simple enough, I guess. I thought it was a takeable. Yeah, it was, I need to call a lot of people off guard, nevertheless. The other issue that still remains, and I know that Don and I talked about it, I think at the last meeting regarding some of the potholes on some of the points of areas where pavement abruptly dead ends. Those still exist unless they were fixed today and they, they're still there and they're still causing casualties to people's tires. And those two areas are on Denison approaching the intersection on the right-hand side going north with Tehachapi Boulevard. And then the other one is on Valley Boulevard, you know, sort of leaving the high school area when you come to the stop sign, right after the stop sign where the traffic lane makes that fairly abrupt left meander. You can see where guys are just dropping the dog on tires off into the dirt. So, yeah. I believe those were repaired, however, with the under scars, it all got washed out. Okay. Yeah. So I think the one on Valley is still not as bad as it was. I looked at that yesterday.
It may actually take, it may actually...
Denison are definitely washed out.
Yeah. It may actually take coming in and maybe sort of inlaying about four or five feet of asphalt to try to...
Maybe, yeah.
Feather that area in a little bit. Denison is pretty bad washed out now, not red on the edge, but there's a...
Oh, there's, there's some fairly deep, there was a river down there.
Goldies over there.
Okay, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Just a couple of comments. I'm seeing a lot of good things happening in my area. Lots of new grass and trees and painting and so on and so forth, but I'm also seeing a lot of overgrowth and I don't know if it's caused from all the rain or just a lack of attention to the properties where there's tons of overgrowth. I saw two or three homes today and I put those in as a possibility that they are vacant properties. So the good thing is that people are, you know, taking care of their properties and also we have some poorly properties that have no attention, so, anyway.
I don't have anything, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session.
Motion.
All seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
If any action is taken in closed session, the city attorney will come back in this room to report that. Thank you.